Okay, I'll be in the fifth quarter and start with public hearing on the CBDG micro enterprise grant and Tim Josephson is here. Hello, all dressed up today.
I know, right? I put on a button up shirt and everything. Normally I come out here like straight from being down the road.
Straight to the trail.
Yeah, exactly. So.
My hair may look like it's been straight from the woods.
I don't know, maybe snow will be there. I don't know. Um, go ahead, take it away. I got, I got your script for the share. Do you have that? All right.
Okay, here we go. All right, I open the public hearing to discuss a community development block grant CBDG project currently underway for the micro enterprise center. And public here knows County Sullivan, Sullivan County Commissioners will hold two public hearings on Monday, February 5th, 2024, 3:00 PM, 14 Main Street, Newport. In the first floor Commissioners Conference Room, the purpose of the first public hearing is to discuss and receive public comment on the on several micro enterprise technical assistance project currently underway. These projects are funded through a federal community development block grant CBD, CDVG, awarded to the Sullivan County in the amount of five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, six hundred, five thousand, six hundred, three thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars. The purpose of the second public hearing will be to discuss and receive public comment on an extension of this CDVG through June 30th, 2025, with the same dollar amounts and project commitments as the current grant. Those interested are invited to attend and comment. Please contact Sullivan County Commissioners Office, six oh three, six three, twenty-five, sixty, or via Relating New Hampshire at one eight hundred seven three five two nine sixty-four. In advance, if you have a disability or need assistance to attend or participate in the hearing, anyone wishing to submit written comments prior to the hearing should address them to Sullivan County Commissioners, fourteen Main Street, Newport, New Hampshire, or email commissioners@sullivancounty.com. I recognize Tim Josephson to address the project.
All right, there we go. All right. Thank you so much. My name is Tim Josephson. I'm an associate planner with the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission. It is a requirement of the Community Development Block Grant Program to hold a public hearing while the project is underway to allow the public an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Today we'll be providing an update on the 2023-24 micro enterprise projects and accepting public comments and questions. Sullivan County received five hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars in CDVG micro enterprise funds to support a micro enterprise center at River Valley Community College in Claremont and Lebanon, and at the Rockingham Economic Development Corporation in Raymond, New Hampshire. Sullivan County is subgranting funds as follows, less administration costs. Ninety-five thousand, three hundred and seventy to River Valley Community College in Claremont. The college's entrepreneurship and innovation program will provide access for twenty low to moderate income micro entrepreneurs in Sullivan County and adjacent communities in Southern Grafton and Northern Chester County to its hands-on workshops, one-on-one coaching, and in-depth programs. Specifically modeled after other successful micro entrepreneurial support programs in New Hampshire, the program offers two pathways, one designed for micro entrepreneurs in the startup phase of their business, and the other for those in the early growth phase of their business. Both pathways combine one-on-one business coaching, training, and access to co-working maker spaces, providing a supportive incubator for these micro entrepreneurs to start and grow their businesses. Through the first two quarters of the project, RVCC has served approximately three micro enterprise business owners. The rollout began at the end of the fall of 2023. Just to note, this program has been going since the fall of 2021, and we have been rolling over with grants every year. This current grant starts in the fall of 2023. Of that ninety-five thousand, three hundred and seventy, the University of New Hampshire, New Hampshire Small Business Development Center will provide business advising services for up to thirty, twenty low, moderate income LMI clients qualifying for assistance through the CDVG micro grant at a rate of twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred, depending on target populations, per LMI client up to a maximum of fifty-four thousand total. Four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars to Rockingham Economic Development Corporation Raymond. Our REDDIC will provide technical assistance and support to up to seventy-five micro entrepreneurs in Rockingham and Hillsborough Counties and throughout the state. Of the seventy-five micro entrepreneurs, one hundred percent will be low to moderate income. REDDIC will provide the technical assistance and training directly to beneficiaries with a maximum benefit of twenty-five hundred dollar value. An additional twenty-five hundred dollar per beneficiary may be used by REDDIC for loan processing costs for credit-worthy businesses enrolled in REDDICS or another CDFA-supported micro enterprise technical assistance program providers training and technical assistance program. Grants will also be available in amounts up to five thousand dollars for equipment purchases and other infrastructure needs for micro enterprises. This project is scheduled to close out by June 30th, 2024.
Okay, yeah, I open the floor to public, to public comments and questions about CDVG micro enterprise projects underway.
I should just note that Maureen Snow is here from River Valley Community College, and under Angel Perdus, Perdy? Right. She is there as well. She is from REDDIC. So if you have questions specifically for them, they're here for you.
Okay, so I will open this. We get a Jordan and Joe, I assume Joe is here. Okay, get a chance, anyone from the public? See any hands raised out there?
No, I promoted her to panelists, but hasn't gone from yet.
Open the floor to staff and commissioners for comment. I had a question. How many is approximately three?
Actually, three is five.
Three, okay. See, that's, at the time I wrote this, and now I knew there might be a little broken there, so.
Yeah, so SBDC is coaching with us in partnership, as Tim mentioned, and so we have the third quarter will accurately reflect the number of LMI folks that we're working with. We do have a little bit of a slow start, and part of that was due to technology trying to get, it's cohort-based, so trying to get a large enough cohort to run it. But on the positive side, we have been able to improve our technology, not funded by the grant through RVCC, so that this is the first time we're running it, and we're very excited about it, where I'm in Lebanon with the students that want to be in person, and then we have it over Zoom, and we've been, and we have four people on Zoom, and there are three of us in Lebanon, and we've changed the model so that we can add students to our clients to this model. We have a good lead base, our advertising through Entrepreneurship Center is working, and so with the improvement of the technology and allowing people to, a lot of people do like that face-to-face, that we are working with the clients or the potential clients to give them some options, catch them up, and then join in with this current cohort. So we do have fifteen, fifteen positive leads, and that doesn't, that's just through River Valley, not through the SBDC. And so the partnership there, we do expect to meet our goals. I can also share with you that we have, of our target population, we have two members in the BIPOC community who are actively involved, and the next phase is to, to complete our online curriculum to help the, the folks that are in business, newly started in business, but need that extra help. And a big part of the entrepreneurship, as I'm sure many of you know, is the community and building the network, and that's what we can see success with. We've had positive response with the integration of in-person and virtual delivery, and we remain dedicated to maximizing the impact of the grant for our community, for the growth and success of our clients. I recently have been doing some training with Antonin Cooley from the Grafton region, and we are looking for ways that we can also work together to benefit clients in both of our regions, so. So that's where I am. Happy to answer additional questions.
Can you make an example of some, some successes through this program?
So we have a student who, from the last cohort, who's opened her own hairstyling shop. She had, she'd been working in insurance full-time job, but had her license and was going through a program, was laid off, and was able to do that. We currently have a student, or client, excuse me.
I know, it's a tough shift, right?
A client who is, who was ready to start a school. She had worked in as paraprofessional in the schools and saw a niche for students who don't quite fit in, that need individualized self-directed learning. So they got started in the fall and are really the steps that we walk these clients through for everything from who is your customer, what problem are you trying to solve, who are your competitors? All of that is really benefiting the clients. We have a client who's looking to start a transportation, or courier business, and our guest speaker tomorrow night is someone in the community who has run his own small business for a double-digit year, so we're really excited because it's, this is a good match for him. Another client is running his own legal services. Not legal services, not, I don't want to misrepresent that. He's not a lawyer, but he's a notary, and he is also bilingual and provides translation services to immigrants, and he helps with paperwork, and so he has it started, but again, needs those steps to become, to get to that next phase of business growth. So even though two of them have already started at the beginning stages, when they, the co-starter program was presented to them, they saw all of the, the twelve steps within that, that really, it's really the basis of a business plan. And the goal at the end of the program is to see if, is to test your concept. And a couple of students have tested their concepts, and others, and then the others I just mentioned are, are going full steam ahead with what they're already doing.
So they learn all the fundamentals of somebody starting out?
Yeah, the finding, how to set up an LLC, and we couldn't do it without our partnership with SBDC. And Casey Trio does come to our co-starter classes as well. So I facilitate co-starters in addition to my other responsibilities, but I really enjoy working with the students in the community. And Liz Emon is a co-facilitator. She's the one that's on Zoom. She's an academic advisor at the college. She's owned her own small business, and so we, we co-facilitate together, and then, as I mentioned, Casey's there. So the students, the clients are getting a lot of support.
And do you, do you offer like intern programs for them? If they're starting their own business, do they work with somebody that's already in business?
So part of this, through one of their assignments, it's called fieldwork, and that's the best type of class to teach, if you will, because the fieldwork really benefits them versus there's no grade, so the more fieldwork they put into it. And so one of the assignments is to interview someone, the, interview someone in their field, and the person that I mentioned that is looking to start his, it's a courier type of transportation business, hasn't connected with the right person, and so that's why I'm bringing in a targeted speaker who's actually going to come to Lebanon in person tomorrow night, and I'll be able to connect those two. So the benefit of working for a college and having lots of connections is that if someone wanted to do that, we could certainly help them. We're connectors. That's what I call this, whether it's the college side or the entrepreneurship side. We like, we connect people, so absolutely, we can help them with that. A lot of them are working full-time jobs because, and, and I can tell you, this program is very beneficial. One of the students was a single father with a daughter, is, you know, makes eighteen dollars an hour, and this is, this, it really is a way in a rural community to build some, some, a business that will really help his family in the future. So, so yes, we can help with, we can help with that if someone were to do that. And other than that, it's talking to people, and we ask them to share how many people they've talked to, share their ideas, and it starts to evolve. We actually, our biggest technology are post-it notes, which we put on this. The business, business plans are based on the, if you're in a college class, a business Canva, this is a specialized co-starters Canva that takes it through every piece of the business. As I mentioned, who's your competition? Your finance, how do you determine price? And we use the post-it notes on that because it evolves through the twelve weeks.
Like, I know there's always a big interest for trades, entrepreneurs and trade people going into their own business. And it, it's a big question that's always asked, is do you ever deal with anybody going into the trades, or is that?
So we're still small, but I envision that will continue to build. I know I'm part of my position at the college is workforce development. In one of the meetings I was at with Commissioner Taylor Kaz, well, a couple of weeks ago, one of the other guests there mentioned construction and housing. We often talk about housing and childcare, and we don't, the college, community college system doesn't offer a construction major, which I looked into, of course, but we would help, we would help anyone who was interested in starting that type of business, any sort of, any sort of trade. Again, we would connect with the specialists.
So, no, no, I'm just gonna add, no, no, I'm just gonna add on what you're saying, is that, like, with the trades, what they, what I've seen in, in micro entrepreneurs like this is you have someone who's already skilled in a trade, but maybe they work for somebody else. It's like, how do I make my own business out of my trade? Like, I might be a plumber for someone, so how do I branch out and start my own plumbing business? So they provide like the guidance on like, how do you establish an LLC, et cetera, et cetera, all that sort of thing. So, like, it's more the business side of it, really.
It is the business side, I would say, with the SBDC, absolutely, but on the college side of it, again, because it integrates with our mission statement, we can do the the content-specific side with the network that we have, either in the community or throughout the, the system. But it's the hard part, and I think anyone who's involved in this, we'd say the hard part is generating interest. How do you find the least folks? And we've had great success with radio ads and with our website, as I've mentioned, that it's to pay for fifteen to fifteen leads, when I say these people have showed interest, that would have cost us thousands of dollars, but our, our reputation is starting to catch on and, and take off, and so because this is our third year, it's my second year, and I stepped in in the middle of it, really, so there's a lot more to come. We're still in our growing stages, I would say. Yeah, microcosm of the program.
Is your contact information in here?
I don't think it's in here, but I can get it to you, guys.
Do you want to get it to me?
Yeah.
I'd like to pick your brain more, but I don't want to do it today.
That works.
Yeah, I'm certainly sure of that, but.
Micro enterprise, it's what, less than five employees, and you're looking for low and moderate income?
That's, that's the target, yeah. So like, the RVCC program, you just work with anybody, and if it happened to fall under low and moderate income, then the school's able to recoup some of those costs. And so they advertise, so that way, like, because it all flows down from the, you know, federal CDVG through the state and then to us. And so if they can find some LMI, LMI folks in their classes, then they can at least absorb some of those costs that way. REDDIC works almost primarily with LMI folks, so they, they have a high goal of working with all those. That's, that's what they said, and they hit it every year, so it's always fun.
And you have spots available, so anybody that's out there listening to the public hearing.
Yes, and, and there's no hard sales, so we take definite questions, we'll spend the time. You know, you can pick our brains, we can give you advice. Again, that goes along with what we do, working for a community college as well, so we welcome that interest.
Question. Are these for only new startups, or are they for existing small businesses that might be struggling and could use some of these, these assets?
So we have, so we have, let's see, we're in week four. Two of them are current business, so I can't accurately answer the assets at this time. That would be on the business side of it, but two are definitely, and when I say they're running their business, but they're at the, still at the very beginning stages of, of building, and so I'm not sure about profitability yet, so I can get back to on that.
I can answer that question, like, as a general rule, though, these programs are available for both people who have an idea for a business, and they're like, I, I think I want to start out like a lawn service business, you know, and, and like, how do I get started with that? Or it can be businesses that have been established for several years, like, you know, looking through here, you know, there's businesses that have been around 2003, 2016, so the ones that have been around, but maybe they haven't grown recently, maybe they're having some stagnation, maybe they're, they've done okay getting started, but they, they're missing something. So they want, they want a little extra guidance and kind of, you know, education on how they can grow their businesses and take it to the next level. Because they're obviously, if they're still following that LMI, then their business is not doing as well as they wanted to, right? So, so we help them get to that next level.
That's cool. Yeah. How does the program, is all federal dollars with a state match, or what's the?
This is all federal, yeah, this is all federal dollars. This is all, yes, this is a federal community development block grant.
All right. No, no state matching contribution on it?
Way up at the high level at the state, there might be for like the broader federal grants, but not for this program for micro enterprise, no. And they allow, it allows, you know, different counties to be the lead on each one, so each county can, has a certain amount they can run of, of dollar amounts that they can run, dollar amounts of programs that they can run, yes.
I hope this is on our website, would somebody interested to contact you or the college?
The college, yeah, anyway, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. She's, Maureen's the best person to approach, if you live here in the region, she can hook you up with everything you need. But yeah, I mean, I, I have answered phone calls at our office too, because, you know, I'm a grant administrator, so people start looking for stuff, and they're like, oh, do you work with this? Sure, we can all help you out.
Another question. How is the amount allocated to the county determined on a population basis?
So the, part of the requirements of the CDVG grants is that every county in the state, I'm not sure if every state is the same, every county has up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they can apply for. And so that's, so we are still underneath the seven fifty for the year. Ninety-five thousand of it and change is from River Valley, but four hundred and sixty-eight thousand is from Rockingham Economic Development Corporation over in Raymond, which is in Rockingham County. But since the federal government looks at the state as a whole, we can move, they can move people from one county to the other, depending on who has room. Sullivan County being the smallest fiscal county has some room there, but Rocky, our REDDIC has been very helpful in providing support for things, and their services are open to anybody out here as well. They do a lot of things online and, and, you know, meet with counselors and stuff like that. And Angel's happy to talk with any of those. But yeah, so that's why they are kind of in our area, because Rockingham County has already maxed out or come close to their max for how much they can get for federal grants for that, so move it into a different county, and they can help the whole state, and it's that way, so.
And we have a partnership with them as well, that, that if we, when we have our clients are ready to look for financing, that, that they will help, so it's another use of the resources that we have.
Yeah, yeah, because Sullivan County doesn't have an economic development corporation, like other counties do, like the Grafton RDC, like what they have looking Cooley, or with REDDIC here, there is a void in Sullivan County for that type of expertise and that kind of connection, so it is nice to have them on board with that.
Okay, and so if, if Dr. Maureen is not on the, if your contact info is on the website, I'm sure it will be.
Yes, it's on the, it's on the RVCC site, right?
It is.
Yeah. On your site? All right, we'll make sure.
So I'm sure if it, it probably is there, but if it isn't, we'll make sure it is.
I'll probably already have an email by the time I get up.
Any other comments on this?
I'd just like to say thank you for Tim's support, as it's been a learning journey and continues to be, but it's, it's been well-supported with lots of.
Oh, thank you. No, it's a pleasure. Angel, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I do not. I apologize. My video is up, but my whole family is homesick today.
Oh, no. Thanks for joining us. Anyone have any questions for Angel, for REDDIC? All right.
Seeing no other public input, I close the public hearing. Yeah, I opened this public hearing to address the proposed extension to the Community Development Block Grant, CB, CDVG application for the micro enterprise center. I recognize Tim Josephson to address the grant request.
Okay, so just a quick caveat. Normally, we ask at this junction, we would ask for another application, we would apply again for next year. CDFA this year has said they are going, they're going to be retooling the program, and it will take them some time. So what they would like to do is just offer everyone who currently has this program an extension of one more year under the same parameters. So we're not going through the whole application process, we're just kind of doing an extension, so they said put this into your hearing for an extension, so I'll read now the script. As required for these hearings, I will start by providing a brief overview of the Community Development Block Grant Program, and then provide a description of the extension in question. CDVG funds are available to municipalities and counties on a competitive basis for projects that primarily benefit low and moderate income persons. Sullivan County has been eligible to receive up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year each for the categories of public facilities, housing, economic development, micro enterprise technical assistance, and emergency funds. These ability study funds are available for up to twenty-five thousand. I provided a handout describing the CDVG eligible, eligible activities that include the area HUD limits. If anyone would like a copy of that, I have that here, there's more handouts. This year, CDFA is not opening new applications for a twenty-four, twenty-five program year. Instead, they will be offering current grantees the opportunity to apply for an extension to the grant with the same dollar amounts and the same parameters as the 2023, 2024 award to cover new clients in the same manner as previously presented. So it's just been doing it for another year with all new people. The proposed micro enterprise project extension is to support the River Valley Community College and the Regional Economic Development Center in the same dollar amounts as twenty-three, twenty-four, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. The funding is used to provide training and technical assistance, and in some cases, micro loan servicing to low and moderate income micro entrepreneurs. If the proposed extension is successful, the funds will be awarded to Sullivan County, which will subgrant the funds, less administration costs, to the subrecipients. The proposed micro enterprise project extension is for up to seven hundred and fifty thousand to support four entities in New Hampshire, the River Valley Community College, the Claremont Maker Space located in Claremont, the Small Business Development Center in Durham, and the Regional Economic Development Center in Raymond. The funding is used by each entity to provide training and technical assistance, and in some cases, micro loan servicing to low and moderate income micro entrepreneurs. If the proposed applications are successful, the funds will be awarded to Sullivan County, which will then subgrant the funds, less administration costs, to the four subrecipients. RVCC is interested in continuing to be recipients of the micro enterprise funding in 2024 with the same amounts as the current year's program with a maximum total of ninety-five thousand, three hundred and seventy, of which forty-nine thousand will be for the program, eleven thousand, eight hundred for program activities, five thousand, nine hundred for indirect costs, ten thousand for subrecipient training, and thirteen thousand, six hundred for grant administration. The proposed activities meet the goals of supporting the development of a diversified economy and supporting educational and training facilities which upgrade the skills of local residents in Sullivan County's Housing and Community Development Plan adopted in March of 2021. In total, for this program year, RVCC anticipates serving an estimated twenty micro enterprises. We are also here to present the proposed extension to the micro enterprise project from the Regional Economic Development Center in Raymond. While this is not located in Sullivan County, REDDIC has been working with Chester County since 2025 and with Sullivan County since 2022. Currently, Sullivan County is administering four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars in CDVG funds with activities including one-on-one meetings with business advisors, training and reading financial statements, and assistance with brand development and marketing. Marketing, a REDDIC anticipates that seventy-five low to moderate income small business owners will make use of these resources. The amount for fiscal year twenty-five is expected to be four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five, with approximately two hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred in direct client support, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars in brand administration costs, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty for indirect expenses, sixty-five thousand, five hundred for program expenses, and seventy, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand in loans. I have other handouts detailing their program. A representative from REDDIC is also here to discuss the programs of DVD. The proposed activities meet the goals of supporting the development of a diversified economy and supporting the educational and training facilities which upgrade the skills of local residents in Sullivan County's Housing and Community Development Plan adopted in March of 2021. Both programs will provide micro entrepreneurs with up to twenty-five hundred dollars of technical assistance and training, or up to thirty-five hundred dollars for businesses located within New Hampshire's quote "community center areas," formerly known as economic revitalization zones. And Sullivan County has community center areas in all of its municipalities, is typically your village center. The program will also provide thirty-five hundred per client for qualifying beneficiaries, clients from target populations of historically vulnerable community members, including Black, Indigenous, and people of color, BIPOC, immigrants, LGBTQ, disabled, and gender nonforming individuals.
Okay, I recognize the representatives from River Valley Community College and the Regional Economic Development Center for further address the grant request.
If you had anything to add about extending the program that I didn't already say.
I thought you said that very well.
Okay, this was just opportunity. Did I miss anything, Angel, on that?
Nope, you were good. Perfect.
I open the floor to public comments and questions about the proposed extension to the micro enterprise CDVG projects. What kind of retooling? So there's a delay?
Yep.
Or an extension because of the retooling of product? Can you talk about that a little bit?
I'm not sure exactly yet. CDFA, the Community Development Finance Authority at the state level, they have not quite released everything. They were hoping to have it ready by this time, but they're not. We should learn more in March. They were hoping to have it ready by this time, but they're not, um, we should learn more in March, uh, by March, what they're going to be retooling it as. I, I couldn't tell you unfortunately, I'm sorry. They just said, we're gonna be kind of tweaking the program, we're taking a look at how efficient it is, um, you know, what's really working well in some places. Maybe some other places we can tighten up, um, maybe streamline processes, things like that, so it's been going around long for a few years now, and they kind of want to take a look and. See what can, see what they can prove.
A tweaking than a complete.
I think, I think so, yeah, I think it's more of a tweak, yeah.
Okay, uh, I now open the floor to staff and commissioners for comment. So basically, they're re-tweaking, but there's, here's another transfer money, please apply, basically, right?
Yeah, they're, cause they anticipate getting the money from the federal government again. And instead of going through an entire application process where they have to review brand new applicants, and how are you changing your program and everything, they're saying. Look, you can just continue what you're doing again for another year, stay with the parameters, you know, if you're going to go for seventy-five people, go for seventy-five people again. Um, that sort of thing, so they're, they're just trying to continue the program for one more year.
So are we confident that you folks can find the people and spend it?
Yeah, I think RVCC's, I mean, Riddick is already at fifty out of their seventy-five clients on the year. Cause they start like gung ho July first, like that fiscal year starts, they're ready, they've got people, you know, geared up to go, they've, they've been doing this for a long time, so you know. Um.
God bless you, but I'm worried about this, I'm.
River Valley, being a school, you kind of start a little slower, you know, September is really when you start starting with stuff, and then as it kind of gets, okay, we're gonna get the course ready. And so we see their numbers jump up a lot more in the second half of the year, so I'm not concerned, they always hit their numbers every year, so I'm not concerned about that.
We have the buildup of the, um, the first year, if you want to co-starters the beginning program, so we, not, in addition to the fifteen, we have. The whole, um, a large number of past recipients of the grant that will look forward to help them grow their business, so let me reach out to them as well.
Alright, cause someone who started a business two years ago, might now need funds that they can use to grow their business, and so they're eligible for that as well.
Anyone else? Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If you have a, um, a client that you've helped start a business. Are they excluded from further assistance beyond that next following years?
So they can stay in the program for three years.
Three years.
So they can start the first year, and, and they can start the first year and get, you know, the, the startup help. And then maybe they work on their own for a year, and then they come back that third year, and they're like, okay, I, I figured this stuff out, but I need the next step. So they help them with different classes or different coaching or something like that.
Cool.
Yeah, it's, it's a really great program, that like, just kind of glancing at the varieties of, of businesses they've been able to help, you know, someone starting a flower shop. Uh, consultants, uh, agricultural, waste disposal, rental management, home restoration, a moving company. Um, my, one of my favorite ones was doing like tax, uh, tax help for his immigrant community, you know, helping those folks like understand it. Like it's totally new to the country, like here, I do taxes, this guy's like, I'm gonna help you, you know, so it's, it's a really cool, wide variety of lists. And I'm, I'm very hopeful, and it's like, gives me a giant list, I'm like, I gotta go check that place out.
Still greet to those that were born here.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, anyone else? Uh, seeing no other public input, I close the public hearing for the proposed Community Development Block Grant, uh. They have a motion on the CBG grant application.
Make a motion?
No, you gotta read the agreement. Can't be that simple.
The motion to approve the submittal of the applications and vote, the authorized county manager Derek Furland. Or county commission chair Benny Nelson, is the authorized designees to sign and submit. The CBG applications, and to, and upon approval of the CBG applications. Authorize the authorized designees to execute any documents. With, which may be necessary to officiate the CDBG contract.
I second that motion.
Okay, and any discussions? All those in favor?
I, I've been also. I Joe Cheever.
I, I Joe, that's good.
Cool, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Oscar, does Sharon need your approval to use her stamp for this?
And I give her that approval.
Thank you.
And as soon as I find out more stuff about the, uh, extension and, and all that sort of thing, I'll send on that to Sharon and Derek and pass it on to you guys. Find out hopefully soon.
Okay, thank you, good, good to see you, Tim.
Good to see you.
Alright, and, uh, second up, uh, presentation of the official services childcare feasibility study. And Warren Street is here.
Hey guys, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
George, I am, I am well, but I'm suffering backache, oh. Um, so, George Benjo, um, this is my colleague, Quaney, she's been doing all the work, so I'm just here to support her. Show her how to get here.
So, um, as you know, uh, Warren Street has been working on a feasibility study for us to evaluate the potential to, uh, provide. Childcare service opportunities for, um, employees and such on the unity campus. And so for Quaney and Jonathan's, um, knowledge, each month we have been updating the commissioners on your progress. So they understand the concept that we went through with the, um, employee survey and survey of local childcare centers. Uh, to help inform the process, and, um, from that point, I'll turn it over to you. And just, I have each of our floor plans I can share on the screen, so. Let me know when you want to shift between the two of them, and I can do that.
You have another, well, before I sit down.
Yeah, that's the, uh, the task.
Alright, Quaney, I'm gonna leave it up to you.
Alright. Um, so, we're passing around, our first task was to, um. In conjunction with, um, Mary and Hillary was to do some surveys to determine the need for the daycare center, and how many children of what age might. Actually enroll with them, and, um, so we did two things, we surveyed, um. Daycare in Sullivan County, um, by calling them up and asking them, you know, um, how many kids that they had, what age. How was, how long is their waitlist, for what age do they, is the longest waitlist, and all these different things that we asked. Are in the report that we passed around called Task One, and, um. So, we, we surveyed, um, Warren Street, we called around, and, and I think we got answers from maybe about ten of the, the daycares in total. And then, uh, Mary and Hillary did a survey with us, also of the employees of Sullivan County. To see what they had to say about, you know, their, their needs, and that's also summarized in this, um, this task. Report, so. Just in general, we definitely found out that there's a big, there is a big need for daycare, um, there is. Uh, I think two of the main, that, you know, just, you know, chime in if you want to, but the. Main need that we saw was that there's definitely, between zero and six months, or zero and twelve months. Is probably the greatest need for a place to, it's the hardest age to take care of, and it's, there's the least amount of resources for that at the moment. And then also the concern that we found out, one of the major concerns of the current daycares was that they would lose staff members if the county did open up. A new daycare center, so we didn't know that before the survey, and we learned that along the way. But all the results are in this, um, in this task, this task report that we came up with.
Yeah, well, that's a red flag, was one of the upper valley clothes, and that was one of the reasons they gave the closing is confined staff.
So, um. After we determined, um. Kind of the, the general, uh, results from both the employee survey and from the daycare survey. We, um, looked at the Aherne Building with the eye of, um. Considering almost what, what we could minimally do to the building in order to open up at least an initial daycare on one floor. And in addition, what we could do, since the building has two floors, what, what would that mean, and how many children could accommodate if we were to renovate?
Before we totally re, re-survey, um, I think you said you reached out to the school too, but didn't hear back from the unity schools, that what I remember?
Yeah, Lionel helped us with that task, and we sent, um, a copy of a very similar survey that we gave to our employees. And unfortunately, we did not hear back.
So this is just our people.
This is just our people, yep.
Thanks, sorry, and before we go off the survey, I wanted to.
No, no worries.
How do they survey, does it say how many were private, I mean, individual people just doing daycare? Or were they all places that had staff?
It was a mixture, some people were just individuals in their homes, uh, having, had they been in homes. Others were staffed by, I don't know what the maximum number of staff members was, but maybe three, unless they, none of them were huge, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the list that we pulled from is the only list that's public, and that's those that are licensed. So, there's a wide variety or expanse of people doing daycare in their homes that are staying under that licensee threshold. And so, those we have no idea of knowing who those are to be able to contact, so. It really is a limited group for those that do have licenses. Hillary, pop in, chime in whenever you want to as well, too. But yes, I just appreciate it, where you guys have been great to help summarize all this, so that's, yeah, we.
Yeah, it's a huge informal network, I mean, I have a three-week-old grandson at home, and they started looking when they were pregnant. And have something lined up starting in August, but they'll see able to August.
In a private home?
Yes.
Yeah.
But word of mouth, you know, she, and she's full all the time too, but just word of mouth, and so-and-so's kid went there, and she does one infant, and. And, um, so we knew that there was one infant there, and.
Yeah, I mean, I will tell you, my experience twenty-two years ago was I started looking for childcare before I told, um, anyone other than my husband that I was pregnant. So, it's not a new problem, um, it just seems to be getting, you know, worse and worse, so.
Yeah. I mean, it might be helpful actually to go through, um, some of these questions and answers that were gathered in the, the childcare, employee childcare needs survey. Because, um, for example. That's the, it's on page, the page one of that survey, but some are easy.
First one, yeah.
Um, so the childcare needs survey compiled, uh, hundred and eight people answered, which is great, great result. Um, but the first question we asked was, uh, do you have a need for child daycare now or in the next few years? And the answer was thirty-one people said yes, and eleven people said no. And then, do you have children in your household who are currently enrolled in daycare, and it's sort of the opposite, yes, twelve, and no, thirty. Um. And we got, uh, a roaring yes for people who would use a county childcare facility, um, in every way. People who did and did not have kids were very positive about the idea, and thought it would be great for, um. Helping to recruit people to the county, and also, um, providing services for those who are already there. Um, and then there, there's a chart there that has the list that I was referring to. The zero to six months, uh, it says current need four and future need ten, so you kind of extrapolated from this. To understand that there's going to be, there is a need for it, but there's not a lot of, um, direction need the second, I mean. From our survey that we made, two-year-olds are plenty, two-year-olds who are, you know, currently needing a place to go. And then the other number that tops up is five plus, but, um, so we, we, we looked at these numbers and we based our plan. Tried to calculate, um, based on these numbers, what might be a, a useful plan, and, and using the Aherne Building. Um, let's see, what else might be important to say, I mean, most people are looking for full-time daycare, that was interesting to find out, not part-time. Um, most of them are a, a regular workday AM to PM. Uh, let's see, five days a week. And then they, then people answered all different, um, budget levels for paying for daycare. Most of it is under what most people are currently paying for daycare, thinking at this point in time.
I think what Hillary would tell you if she was still here, one of, some of the things that we interpreted from this is that, um, the survey identified. Probably a lot of children that are currently staying with a family member, that's why that, it's not, it's. They say that they have a need, but not currently enrolled, um, and then we think that that also probably drives some of the low budget numbers. Um, that, um, our employees list for weekly budgets for daycare, cause they may be paying, you know, grandma or grandpa. Just a small stipend to go towards food or things like that, so, um, that was sort of our interpretation of some of the data. And then, um, one of the other things that came up more as, um, I think on, more on the ends of the scale. More so in the middle, is that there's always concerns brought up by particularly se- second shift for evening and overnight care. Which is a whole different ballgame when you start talking about putting children to sleep overnight, so. Um, those, something is way beyond what we could, what we could accommodate, but, um. But in general, I think this survey gave us a really good picture, and, uh, we actually got a lot of positive response from those people that didn't have a need for childcare. But just in supportive of having a service, having a place available for employees here on campus.
I mean, the, the, the range, the price range for Sullivan County seemed to be average with the state. As far as what it costs for childcare.
That's a good question, I think, I think it is, but I can't say definitively.
Here, so with the same people, said no way, no how, will they put their.
Yeah, so, um.
One of those things, build it and they won't come.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, because they're not, some of them probably give up looking for it because they can't find it, some reasonably. Um, I'm sure, the cost, you listen to some of the averages nationwide, my gosh, it's ridiculous. Some people pay for childcare, you know, speaking of getting old.
Yeah, it was printed on the wrong side there, but that was a test.
Yeah, I think another potential that we, um, might not have been able to capture. Without digging into it a little bit more is, um. Is the numbers where someone doesn't have a child enrolled in daycare because the other parent is at home. And if there was a more affordable and convenient place for somebody on county property. That, that could free up a second parent to work, um, if it was affordable, I, you know, I don't know how that would have been captured. But that could be another potential, we, we think about maybe, you know, grandma or grandpa having a child, but what if it is, uh, you know, a second parent that's at home? But, a, um.
Well, anecdotally, you hear that a lot, it's like, it's cheaper, it makes more sense for me to stay home than go to work and pay for daycare.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that the doctor, doctor taxes, daycare, cost of debt?
You typically can do, um, you can do a, what's it called, a dependent care spending account, where you, um. Money comes out of your ta- your paycheck before tax, and then you can resubmit for eligible expenses, so you can avoid it. Um, taxed that way, um, as long as you, you're using like a licensed professional. If you're just using an unlicensed professional, you can't claim those expenses. So for some people it is, and for others, it's not, and it, it's also, not every organization offers that as a benefit either.
And, and how is the state on regulations on these child cares, is that something that changes yearly? The regs, or is that pretty much a standard?
It's overseen by a licensing department at DHHS.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so depending on who's overseeing it, it could, we know and love.
Yeah, the, um, the restrictions or the, you know, the compliance.
Yeah.
Is, I mean, you can run a daycare out of your home, I mean, that's, and be licensed, if you, you know, if that's what you want to do. Problem is, is that, like many of them, you know, even at sixty-five, seventy dollars a week. It doesn't, you know, you get ten kids, and you, you're, because you're licensed, you're regulated, so many staff people per child and per age. They don't pay well, they don't give benefits, and that was one of the things I found interesting, is that several of the. Of the respondents said that, you know, you'll steal my employees because they'll go work for the county, because they're gonna get benefits. I mean, the reality is, I think if you implement this, you're gonna have a good daycare, you're, you're gonna be, it's gonna be well received, it'll, it'll be well-run. And you'll have staff that will stay, because, because of the benefit package and, you know, working for.
I mean, you, you know, we can't. I mean, you you know, we can't, it it's sad, I mean, we can't watch out for everybody else. I mean, we do have to protect our bottom line, it's not that we're trying to take people away from, you know, or shut daycares down because of this, it's just that we we need to try to advance what we have.
I think it's a huge recruitment tool.
Yeah.
You know, for bringing younger staff on, you know.
If if we do go through all the hoops that we haven't, I mean, one method of operation, maybe your partner within existing daycare to have them run it in our space and have us stay out of the day to day operation, so it's, we haven't, we haven't gotten to whether they will be our employees or whether we would um, work with an existing um, entity to to run it for us. So we we haven't gotten that far yet.
Yeah, that's still.
So throw that out there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So you wanna talk a little bit about what we did with Ahern, with some of the so we used the survey data to help um, sort of target what um, would most be needed by our employees and sort of what they envisioned for their future. Um, and we also took a look at um, utilizing the Ahern space for this. Um, it's a building that's gonna become vacant at the end of uh, the nursing home project. Um, with its space being replicated within the building, as you know, so um, we've always, we've talked the last few years about what the best and best long term use of this building is and um, it seemed like a uh, shoe in for something like this. And so uh, we asked Warren Street to take a look and what was some of, I guess we looked at it a couple of different ways is, is one what was, what was the least amount of um, financial impact as far as making the space um, converting the space to a daycare center and then it was um, how do we maximize the number of children in there and what, and then um, what was sort of the largest investment, the largest type center that we could put in, so uh, the the three options really came in, two options with using just the top floor and then lastly, um, outfitting the top and the bottom floor, so um, we'll throw up. I think you have them in front of you, but we'll also throw them up on the screen for anyone else taking a look and um, I'll let Queenie go through these, but.
Okay, so we can just go on to these, so this is an existing plan. It's an existing kitchen and two bathrooms, and this is the entrance, uh, ramp that leaves off the entrance. And then the open area with um, these are like bay windows with benches that you can sit on. This is the uh, stairs to the left. And this is where the playground would be, so, so, so that's what we were starting with. And our idea is to change as little as possible to make it as feasible to process and enjoy this. And so we went through a few steps on that. So um, the first step was to leave this basically as is. You know, this could be smaller, bearing in mind this could be non maximized, but we're not trying, we're trying not to change a lot to keep the cost down. So um, this food prep changing storage cleaning area is combined with a maybe an office desk for the teachers. Um, or the center director. Um, we kept one bathroom, we demoed one bathroom now. Actually, you don't even have to really demo this bathroom, so that will also save money on this particular scheme, but um, because there's a limit of the number of children, so in this particular space, which was twelve, uh, hundred and fifty square feet. Um, you can fit, if you wanna keep it just one space and not pay to divide it and, you know, keep it as simple as possible. You can combine the ages thirty six to sixty months together. And then in that case, there's a maximum of twenty four children that can be accommodated in this space. If you put this bathroom back in, you could still have twenty four children, there's still enough square footage for that. Um, and with that number of children, you need one associate teacher and two assistant teachers. You also have to, you also um, need to have a center, center director also. This, the DHHS rules are, I mean, I've learned, I have a lot of them in my head now, but it's complicated and I'm sure that there's a little bit of room to, you know, any given situation to talk to them about exactly the distribution of exactly which positions that are necessary in any given daycare, but this is what I understand right now. So we would have to, we would have to redesign the entrance to be ADA accessible, right now it's not. Um, it shouldn't be a major endeavor, but it's just not wide enough and a few things need to be changed, and the slope probably isn't right either, it looks too, way too steep. Um, and then this back stair to where the, we imagine the playground could be. Um, we can redesign the steps and provide a ramp so that it is ADA accessible to get back into that playground area. So that is the most simple starting scheme.
So, and the one thing that um, sort of is off from the the simplest scheme or the the least financially impact is that if you look at what our staff has told us, it doesn't match up with what they are.
Yeah, just.
What their future needs are, yeah, three, basically three and four year olds. Um, or that five year old until they hit kindergarten, so then we took, the next step was to say, what's the least amount of um, financial impact we could have but fit our employee group the most, and so that um.
Yeah, oh, uh, just one more thing about this, is that there's currently a garage underneath. So if that were to stay, then it would have to be fireproof, depending if there's sprinklers or not, so that's just another expense to this particular scheme.
Um, so then the second option, took a look at um, minimizing the financial impact, but creating a better split that would serve both infants and toddlers.
Yeah, exactly, and I I don't even know how much difference there would really be in terms of cost, but as you can see, there would be more of us, because we want isolate the space, it would be for ages zero to thirty five months, and in this space here, um, we also put a partial wall, which would give a little area for the infants to be and plus their cribs. Um, and then this part would be for the older ones in this group, uh, up until three years old. And this space um, would require one associate teacher and one assistant teacher for that number of kids, eight children. Um, but it would provide an area for those younger kids. And so then, the remaining area here is six hundred and fifty square feet and that would be once again for that age group we were talking about in the last scheme, um, thirty six to sixty months. And that area, square footage would accommodate sixteen children, um, with one associate teacher and one assistant teacher. The kitchen would stay the same, the two bathrooms would stay the same, so none of this over here changes, we'd have to again adapt the entrance and adapt the back, those are all the same as the other scheme, the only thing that's different is isolating this space and isolating a little circulation space there.
Now, is is a changing table, is that in kind of the hallway or is that in the kitchen area?
This, this right here?
Yeah.
This is in the kitchen food prep area and that's okay as long as it's separate.
Okay.
From, if this side would be the food prep area and storage, and this side would be the changing table with its own little sink.
I mean, don't call me a snob, I've changed a baby on a kitchen table before, but I was just wondering if it was supposed to be in the government scheme of things.
It's okay as long as you have a separate, it's, you know, fairly separate from where.
Now, do you, do you get some of your feedback and information by going down the facilities to see what they do, or is this all stuff that you?
It comes out of the standards of. The, I can tell you that the majority of the daycares that exist are in spaces that they just happen to have.
Oh, I'm sure.
Or somebody's house, or, you know, they're, they weren't designed from day one to be a a daycare.
Yeah, totally, I I honestly like that.
Now, in this one, do you, do you need the two bathrooms or would bathroom two make more sense for the changing nursing area?
Yeah, and this one you need both of them, because you need one that's directly off of this classroom. For these younger kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to be right there, but the older ones then.
Okay.
Yeah, the one that's shown sort of in the, the kitchen area is really just to serve this thirty six month up. So by that time, a lot of those kids are toilet trained anyway, so it's not it's not certainly as used as much as the one that's right in the infant and infant room, so, yeah.
Yeah, I I ca- I um, was emailing back and forth with DHHS and they were telling, I was asking them what age, until what age do you need a changing table, and they said it's always good to have one in any group that has three year olds, because you never know, there might be some that still. That's why that's there.
It's an issue off the kindergarten even.
Yeah, definitely.
Queenie, can you speak to how many staff is required in the previous and how many staff?
Yeah.
Total here?
So let's see, we have here a valid page and put it, let's see. Okay, and this one that we're looking at, we need one center director, one staff member, and that's because whenever there's five or more children in any given daycare, you have to have a staff member, I'm, I I admit I am not positive what this training of the staff member needs to be, but that's what seems to say in the rules. And then um, so we've got, let's see, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, six staff members necessary for this scheme, and then the previous one, we have, we, we have five. So one less um, staff member in the first scheme than in the second one. And then this one, if you only did the second floor of the building, um, it would be the same situation where the garage would be also first floor and the fire separation that had to happen. Any questions?
I've heard it's not sprinkled, right?
No, it's not sprinkled. Yeah, so, so this is the one that really meets sort of what we see in our employee need survey. And then the last thing we asked them to take a look at is how would we maximize um, the whole space of Ahern, and so that's the option C.
And this one is designed to segue into the next one. No, don't worry, the previous one is designed to segue into this one, so whatever is initially built in the previous scheme can be not changed when moving into this scheme, so that's why it's called phase two of scheme B.
The only difference is the window down.
Downstairs, yeah. So we move the um, the older children downstairs.
Yeah, would you get it in the west and northwest?
Yeah.
So in the downstairs area, um, so obviously the downstairs and upstairs have to be connected and it has to be ADA accessible. And so what is incorporated in this theme is um, a Lula lift. And you guys are, are you familiar with those?
Yeah, yeah.
So um, so that would fit, could fit here, and this is all, you know, very schematic, this could fit here and then you have stairs going up to the second floor. Um, you could have a separate entrance or not on this first floor, it might be nice to have this group of kids be able to come in this way. Um, and then I provided a admin teachers room down here. And this bathroom accommodates uh, that number of children at that age, ten to children, we just need two toilets. And down here you need two teachers. Um, existing mechanical was on this side, so it would, I just thought it would just stay there. This is stacked somewhat with the one above, so hopefully minimize cost. Um, it's pretty simple and I thought we could maybe, if we go this direction, you know, add on some windows to emulate the above, you know.
Yeah.
Because they're actually really nice.
Has to have as much lighting and.
Yeah, it has a nice scale, actually.
And so they'd have to go around the building and up to hill to get to the playground area, right from?
Uh, yes, and I I, I don't have that circulation on the outside of the building here, just on the inside. Just walk the lift and out the back door.
Yeah.
Yeah, or up the stairs.
Probably makes more sense in the down in the parking lot.
Yeah, probably so, yeah, I think going out and around, yeah, I mean, there's this side door here, but you know, if it's possible, we could bring, you know, kids up and out that way. It wouldn't be ADA accessible, but it could be done.
Well, according to the option, the Lula will.
Yeah. So let's see, um, in this scheme, how many, so we have one, two, three, four, sorry, didn't total these at the bottom, but I have them. Um, three, four, five, six, seven, basically teachers. One center director, plus eight, and staff member, that's nine, so that's nine compared to six.
Yeah.
So three more in order to have this bottom area occupied with more children. And a total of forty three children are in this particular scheme.
You 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 only, you based it off of full capacity?
Yes, based off full capacity, forty square feet per child, which is the DHHS rule, yeah.
Yeah, so it doesn't quite double it.
Right, between the two, that's fine. I mean, maybe there's, I think um, I I think it's important to have an administrative system down there, but if it weren't important, if we decided that it wasn't, or we just, then that we could expand more in there, maybe somebody's, actually, I think now that I see that, I think it'd still be maximum twenty four kids on the first floor, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so only two more kids would be accommodated.
But that's gonna really ramp it to cost by the time you do western, all that.
Yes, yeah.
You wanna talk costs?
Yes, oh yes.
And I was thinking, we really can't start with the first floor and add the second, because that's major construction too.
Yeah.
And we, we have to decide one or two floors from the get go, right?
Otherwise, you're gonna be, if you decide to do the second one after, then you, that's having to rip some stuff out, but.
You know, be like moving people around like the nursing home.
Yeah, we, I think there's two there. Jack a hammer in the floors to get the toilets in and, and all kinds of stuff, so.
So, um, I did a quick spreadsheet, just um, based on the first scheme of just renovating the top floor.
Okay.
To get to, uh, came to roughly two hundred and thirty dollars a square foot, so in my mind, it justified um, a two hundred and fifty dollar square foot number, just, I'm just gonna carry two fifty for eighteen hundred square feet. Cause there's some things that I didn't know and I just wanted to talk through with you, so I did this um, over the weekend. Um, and then we got an email from RPF this morning saying that they had done the study in two thousand nineteen. And there's some issues there that we need to sort of talk to as to how do you wanna handle, so there is lead paint. So all the drywall and the mud in the building is, has asbestos in it, my opinion it is, it should all go.
Yeah.
Um, and there's lead paint on the outside of the building. So there's, there's an issue of, you know, do I put kids in anywhere that has, you know, the possibility of lead dust? Cause you never know, you get two months, two years down the road and someone takes their kid and gets tested and you have no idea if they got it from the house they're living in, but they say they got it from Ahern, you know?
I've looked at that building a number of times, what, what is the siding on that building?
It's the trim that was painted.
Just the trim?
That has led on the garage door side.
Yeah, yeah, we had.
I think this is, I think it's just T one eleven on.
Yeah, I think.
Outside.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
I think that was replaced at some time.
Yeah.
And it might be right over the clavboard underneath, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. So we could take the T one eleven down and you could find old clavboard that was, you know, has six layers of paint on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the other thought is, you know, with, I'll adjust these numbers for you, but I didn't carry any abatement.
Mm-hmm.
If it were me, I'd strip it down and just start from um, start from square, I mean, you have good bones, you get good structure, you got a roof, just you know, strip it down to whatever the plywood is underneath.
Yeah.
And re-site it, um, and we could just side it in, in a vinyl siding, you know, or something inexpensive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I just looked at, I tried to create a little pro forma for you, so if we're just doing just the first floor, um, the renovations come to roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it sounds like a lot of money. You spend it really fast, I carried a little contingency, cause we haven't done construction drawings. Um, I carried a little money for a phone system. Um, the Harvey estimate, and I, I didn't know if this was included, but I, I would assume that we need to put parking in for the daycare. Their original bid was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that parking lot, which we didn't take.
Yeah.
And I bumped it to two hundred saying that number was two years old and um, uh, landscape, playground fence equipment, we have to fence an outside area, we have to create a soft. Landscape, playground fence equipment, we have to fence an outside area, we have to create a soft scape. Um, whether it's wood chip or some kind of rubberized surface. And some kind of play structure, I just put a budget in there for a hundred and a quarter. I didn't know what we were doing for a kitchen, it looks like we're just doing a serving kitchen and food will come out of the nursing home. More or less, um, so that fifty thousand dollar number could probably go away.
On the existing. What's there is good enough for the daycare, isn't it?
No, cause I think you would end up having to, you'd have to end up putting a hood in. And we just had a residential, um, range. And.
And we need washer dryer.
And we need a washer dryer, so fifty is probably high, but.
If you put a kitchen in, they're gonna consider it a commercial kitchen, so you get into the whole. We have to put a little anseled bottle over the stove, we have to put a hood in, we have to put. Two hand wash sinks that are, you know, three feet away from the other sink. You know, it just, it snowballs into, so if you're just bringing brown bag lunch, or you, a hot meal. With a hot cart from the nursing home, it's totally different. So I just needed some input from Mary on that. I carried, um, furniture and fixture, thinking that we're gonna do some, something for, to fit this out. Um, and that number goes up a little bit depending on, no emergency generation, I carried a ten percent. Contingency for the, for the owner. Um, I just estimated fees all the way down, and. That first floor to make it a daycare is basically a million one. Now, could we make it eight hundred or seven hundred, maybe? But we have, we're, yeah, I mean, I don't wanna tell you it's seven and it end up being a million two, so.
And that's assuming we don't, now, if we park anything there, we need to sprinkle it, which is a big knock too, I would think.
So I have, we haven't done a complete code review?
Yeah, we actually don't have to sprinkle it, but it has to be three hour.
Separation.
Separation instead of two.
But if we don't, we decide for some reason we don't wanna park stuff there, or find a use of not parking stuff there, do we still need to do the three hour?
No, if the use changes.
If you're not using it, it's just empty space, you just leave it in the space.
Well, the carpenters, e- everybody's got space now, right, the electrician workshop, so, yeah, the highest and best uses. Is for garage.
And that's a hazard, so that's a three hour separation, so we gotta wrap all the columns. That floor system.
The, those costs need to be in here, I guess is where I'm going at.
So you need to tell me what that use is gonna be.
Yeah, well, the, the, I, nothing comes to mind, I was in the garage, which we've kinda taken care of everybody with the renovation.
Yeah, cause realistically, is, yeah, cause if we don't park the nursing home. The, like, so there's three bays, I use one of them, could we make accommodations? Yeah, we could make accommodations, but it's really the, the nursing home has two vehicles. Um, that are parked underneath there, one of them probably will eventually go away, but. They really need a place for the S U V that they have, that, that's their main vehicle. That they use to, um, transport residents to, um, appointments and things like that, so.
Space for the workshop, and, you know, we found everybody's space in the renovation, so we don't need it for non-vehicle.
Yeah, cause that's a thing that we, right now, I'd say the, the. Our vehicle parking is sort of the least, um, options that we have available. For things, so to, to lose that. It'd be difficult, but it's something that we also have to weigh the, the expense on.
Now, what about, um, sorry to use up your time doing this, but there's. Like, even space in the, in the big barn there, could some of that stuff move into A Hearn and perhaps park vehicles?
Um, the barn, the hay barn is where we, we park the activity bus in there. And typically the wheelchair van are parked in there.
Okay, but there's a lot of stuff in there, like the trailer.
And so there's the two trailer bays around the backside. Um. Those could eventually be used, I don't know what our agreement with the state lease and the.
Well, I'm thinking the trailers should probably go under A Hearn. And, and park your vehicle.
Yeah, if you've got no gas or, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's just, uh, we'd have to look.
It would be considered storage.
I think it's low hazard storage group S two.
Which is probably a two hour rating rather than a three.
Yeah, right, I don't know if those, those trailers have propane bottles on them for heat or anything. I know we heat the bay. I don't know if they do or not.
It's got medicine and stuff like that, it needs to be heated. So the, the big red barn on the hill has miscellaneous storage, so I'm wondering if we could move some of that stuff under A Hearn and.
There, there's a possibility, I mean, it's just.
If we could find some non-hazardous stuff and move the vehicle parking up to the big red barn.
Yeah, I mean, I think from a holistic approach is utilizing A Hearn is definitely. Less impactful than starting from scratch, building a daycare center.
Oh, yeah, yes, I.
The storage thing, we work that out as part of it.
Well, and that's a handy place to park in, but, but sprinkling or. Three hour floors, I would think, so it's tangible cost.
It's doable, it's, it's doable, we can get there.
Well, and I suppose in the grand scheme of things, like you're talking with lead sprinkling, maybe that. A bad thing, get the water.
You do have the water, and before you pave, final pave that road, you could, you could do a tap and a tee and just. That might be something you just add anyways.
Yeah, sprinkle line runs right by the building, the one that goes out to the biomass, so depending on that size, and then. Actually, I think the corrections feed goes right by it too.
Yeah, so it's just a tap and a four inch riser and.
Alright, sorry to digress, I just noticed it wasn't in here.
No, it's a good question.
So the, the second estimate takes into consideration renovating both floors at the same time, not. Right, two different projects, but at the same time, there's a little more money, because we get the Lula, um. And, you know, to frame in the stair, which would be done at the same time. The play yard gets a little bit bigger, because it's based on square footage, it's based on numbers. Um, and that's a good question, if you decide only to do the upper floor, do we design? Like, the extra stuff, the, the, the playground to accommodate, to fit out of the. Bottom floor at a later date, it's basically how big do we make it, it's a fenced area and. But in my opinion, you're between a million and two million dollars and, you know. And that doesn't take into operating costs, that's just.
I think that's where we would have to. Really dig it is. Numbers on a projection, a projected. Um, enrollment into that program and, and. Phase it up as to see what our income would be versus. What we're gonna be putting into this children and borrowing, if we need to borrow, to build it. And if that's gonna pay for itself, or if it's gonna, you know, be a, be a. Another burden on the taxpayers, to have to cover the cost of this thing, I, so I. I think that's, that's a big dig, what you've done is great, I mean, it's really nice to.
I think you could easily, you know, bill phase one, and it'll be full. And then you just, you know, you go a couple of years, you see how it goes, you see how it's received. You see how many are actually coming from the nursing home or other county departments and. Do you have people from outside looking? You know, and then once you're established, honestly, the, to expand down is a very simple project.
Yeah, and then you'd already have, you know, for example, the playground built bigger, which probably wouldn't cost anymore, that much more to build a little bit bigger.
As a start with, yeah.
Yeah, so you wouldn't have to spend, you'd save money in a certain sense.
It would be tough to do the, the western stuff with kids there, right, that would be.
You could, you could do it, I mean, you're gonna, you could cut the hole and build a shaft. You know, over a weekend, once that's done, they can continue using it and. Construction could continue, or you decide to put the stair in now. Which takes away from the numbers of, that, you know, but you could put the stair in now, um.
Or leave space to the left.
Even if the lift is going in and under construction, you can still access the bottom floor and the top floor, um.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, to have that in.
I mean, we talked about what it would look like to build a new building, and you're probably talking three times this cost, which. I couldn't see it putting forward, honestly.
Yeah, I mean, A Hearn needs a lot of work on its own, we have some money set aside for projects that we decided to defer along the way. Um, that. I think, um, and I know Derek wrote in his memo to you guys about the process for. Um, northern bor- borders coming up, but so we do have some set aside that we could readily have available for. A match, um, but I think it also, like, if we made smart decisions along the way to. Facilitate utilizing that second floor. Um, at, at a later time, I think that definitely would. Would be the smartest thing to do, and taking advantage of A Hearn versus having a new building is, you know, we do. You know, we don't, we know the exterior needs a lot of work, but it's a structure, we've already got the utilities there. Um, there's a lot that we can draw off of rather than starting from complete scratch.
Yeah, for sure.
So do you think the funding would come from northern borders?
Um, I think that's what we see as just a potential source, I don't know how competitive. Are, um.
So.
Our application would be, but that's just one particular thing that has come to mind.
I'll share with you, have you guys heard of Baba? Build America, Buy America? That passed in January of twenty-three. We're doing a project right now in, in Keene, Roosevelt School renovation, sixty units of housing. And we're the Guinea pigs, so. Um, the ruling is, everything has to be built. And supplied in the United States, I can't buy steel from Canada, I can't buy, I can't. Buy parts and assemble it in this country. Which is a big problem, cause there's certain things that are not made in this country. Um, emergency lights with a battery are not made in this country, you know, so. Um, and what we've been told is, um. Right now, C D B G is the biggest contributing funder of Roosevelt, so. Um, C D B G and Rural Development are the ones that are mandated for that to meet. Um, Rural Development came back and said, whatever you satisfy, whatever C D B G says they're satisfied with. They're the ruling funding agency, we'll go along with, but Rural Development is gonna get, I mean, um. Going to borders is gonna get rolled into this too. All sounds great, so I asked a lighting vendor last week, what does it mean? Because what we're doing in Keene is we're asking for a price, market price to renovate, and on a market price. To certify everything is Baba, two prices. The lighting manufacturing rep came in and said, you can buy a can fixture in Home Depot for twenty-five bucks. If you want me to certify, provide a product that's certified Baba, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Five times the cost.
Doesn't even make sense to me.
Because they have to find, you're not buying a product that might be made in Japan or that's being sold by Home Depot. Now they gotta find and find a product that's actually gone through and been certified, and it might come out of Philadelphia.
Every component.
Is built. So it's got Keene housing.
Wire made in it, housing made in it. Steel for the housing was made.
It's supposed to help the economy, I'm just telling you, I'm just giving you the heads up, that. Um, C D B G and, and the ones that are gonna have that requirement down the road. Cause this is gonna get played out a little bit more, um, there might be more strings than just Davis Bacon Wages.
I, I don't get it, I mean, i- if you think about it, how does it help the economy if you're spending four or five times more? To build it, because it's an impact to the economy, because the taxpayers end up paying.
And you can see with, with chips, you know, stuff that vital important, we ought to be, we ought to have the technology, we ought to have the. The bandwidth to do it here, but yeah, emergency lights.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, everything's made overseas, so they're, they're thinking that's gonna force it back, I don't know, but it.
Looking into that, I would think they could say, well, laying. Well, it makes lights for police cars and that type of stuff, but.
So, in, in terms of a budget, um, it depends, you guys gotta give us some direction, which way you wanna go, and I'm happy to. Sit with you, Mary, and sort of talk through where you think you wanna be, so you have a package to go forward, um.
So, um, we aren't asking the commissioners to make any decisions or recommendations today, this was just really to. Hear the results of the study based versus, you know, where we gathered the information from and the work that Warren Street has done, and taking a look at the. D H A S regulations for licensing and what we can do with A Hearn, so, um, I know in his. In his, uh, memo to you, Derek does mention, um. Decisions about, um, timelines and laid out what the northern borders, um, application process is. And so that's not there, the letter of intent to file an application isn't due until the middle of March, so we. Figured we would circle back when he's back at the next commissioner's meeting and talk more about that. And then, um, as we've also talked about the second decision being, you know, how we staff it and, um. Our ability to staff it, and so that's the business side of decision, as Commissioner Heeman was talking about, so. Um, I think that's the plans for the next discussion, giving you some time to, um, think about it, um.
I didn't see anything in here, I don't know if you did anything like this, but I didn't see anything in here on what maybe. The hour we pay for staffing would be, you have any idea? It's not in here, have you ever done any research on that at all? Whether it's like from. Cause I, I'd like to run some numbers myself and just look at. Um, you know, you know, with what you've got in here.
Yeah.
And, and get a, some kind of a look at what it.
I think Hillary might have some information on that. I can talk with her.
Also, if you want me to send you a reasonably sized chart.
Well, I'm, I'm okay, what I can read is, is I assume it's kinda all in, uh.
A, a good friend that actually runs a facility that has a daycare in it. And I, I'm sure I could get numbers from her. Um, as, as to how that plays out.
I think you're gonna find it's all close to minimum wage, they're not making.
I'm sure they're not making, yeah, a fortune, that's why, i- in our case. I- it, it might be smarter for us to offer benefits, because it, it's a lot more attractive, uh, picture. To, to weigh that out, I mean, it's probably a pretty small price to pay, if it's gonna fill it, fill the building. You know what I mean?
Well, it helps you manage that. Consistent staff and. We did some work for, um, a hospital, went where Douglas, um, did the programming for a daycare that they. It's just employees of the hospital, and, um. The, the, I, the directors in R N, and I, you know, and all of the teachers that I saw were. You know, in their late thirties, forties, so those were careers, not, you know, out of high school, just. Kids sort of babysitting, you know, that kind of thing, it was a sixty kid daycare, um. So, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a big endeavor. I'm happy to do whatever you want for the next meeting that you need, so you just need to tell me. What direction that you do wanna go.
I know, I mean, I, I would think we certainly wanna start, well, I don't know if we wanna do it today, but I'm thinking. One floor oversized playground, I guess the only question is whether you put the stairs in.
Yeah, I think, I, I think it'd be wise to look at it both ways, I mean, i- if it's. Beneficial to do it all at one time, and it saves money.
So, I, I do have a suggestion, and I think this is a question from Mary. It might make, if you're, if you're going to put that parking lot in. I would say that you got a better price coming from Harvey with the site contractor on, and have him do that outside this project. I don't know if you have the money in, in the nursing home to cover that, but I would take that directly out of here. Cause it could be, you know, a third more, if you're hiring a separate contractor to come in, um.
Well, that's, and the, the site work guys are gonna be there anyway, so it's not like they're coming in at a, at an off time.
Yeah, and this summer would be the time for them to, to do that, so.
Yeah, we had that parking lot as an alternate, um. Yeah, we had that parking lot as an alternate, um, in the drawing, so. The only thing that I don't remember offhand how big it is, but the only thing is is.
It's twenty something.
We would have to, yeah.
You probably wanna see, we probably wanna draw out how big the playground wants to be and if.
Right.
I'm not sure where the parking was.
Yeah, I think we just have to look at it again to see if where there's conflicts on on the size, if it if it needed to be that big and if. How it would overlap with where we would wanna have a play area.
Yeah, you could wrap the playground around the side of AHRN.
Yeah.
So you actually have like a sledding hill and that kind of thing worked in.
I know there's a demand, because I I've spoken to some, uh, friends of mine that actually are business owners. That have been approached to donate money and and and. Their employees can use the daycare uh uh for that.
Yeah.
For that benefit and and. Uh. So so there is a demand, if if people reach it out and go and after these places to try to get these, these things funded. So, um, you know, I. I, uh. I don't doubt that the needs are there.
Yeah, we were just thinking northern borders was, um, this is a, um. Politically. Now's the time, if you're ever gonna get money for daycare, now's the time.
Yeah, we thought that.
I have heard that Northern Borders has money to give away.
Yeah, I actually, in Derek's absence, I'm registered for a webinar tomorrow about this year's application process. And awards basis and things like that, so hopefully that will have some more information. Yeah.
Cool. Do you guys have any thoughts about the nursing home? Are you guys happy?
Yeah, we had a meeting with the delegation reps, what, uh. Monday, yeah, and they they seemed happy. And it's, um, the only question now is we're trying to figure out when to bond and how much and yada, yada, yada.
No, I think, I I I think everything's going better than, better than planned, really.
It's going fast.
It's going fast.
No big surprises, which is.
Yeah, the the surprises are minimal. They're not anything that's blowing us away, so.
Yeah, people are excited to see the, um, room drawings and.
Oh, the renderings went over.
Went well.
Very well for staff and families and everybody, so, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot of people that don't realize this is gonna be a new nursing home when it's done, like all the way through.
Well, so you guys did a good job putting things together, cause it, e- everything seems easy to follow, so.
Yeah, I said.
Glad you haven't heard the noise in the back room.
I heard plenty of that.
A lot of trust in going on in the room next to me. Mary can attest to that.
They did bring staff into a room markup and they had some changes, so.
Major, but yeah.
Outlets and, you know, I need an outlet here close to the bed and some stuff, I don't know specifics, but yeah, so. So not everything was perfect, the staff, but it was, it's cool to have staff in there before it's built and.
That's like any construction, you get, you get people that do it every day for a living, they'll always see something that. Why the heck did they design it this way? You know, because it can be done easier this way, so you hear that all the time on.
You good?
I'm good. Yes.
All right, you'll let us know what you want us to do next on this?
Part of my job. So.
Getting them killed each other.
Yeah.
No, it's all going well.
It is going well, yeah, it's, everybody on is great on the team and that's what really makes it successful.
And we haven't had a dip, now, and I I was hoping he was wrong and thinking he might be that, um, with the Derek was worried about a. Dip in census with the construction, people are thrilled and happy to be there and stuff, and COVID on the other hand is.
Yeah.
Kinda hurt getting.
I don't know what it is today, but we're on the, we're on the rise because we got cleared, but we have worse, worse numbers for COVID residents than. Something like that, yeah. Yeah, almost just about as bad as, um, the original pandemic.
Wow.
Um.
No, we're not, not sick, just testing positive.
Just testing positive and.
But not being ill.
No, and the regulations through, um, I. I think it's. CMS or whatever, still very restrictive on nursing home admissions when you have staff or residents test positive. And it doesn't take much for them to shut you down and where a lot of, um. Sort of the rest of the world has also returned to like five days after you test, it's still like ten days after you test for nursing homes, so. Once, um, once it gets in, it's, it's hard to get out of that. Piece where we can't admit new residents.
Yeah, days rule, we had to change our Christmas plans, because the other side of the family had a COVID case and, you know, and but. But that's it, somebody tests positive, so you have to test everybody, and a lot of people, and it's cold symptoms for the most part, and but. A lot of people don't know they have it, but you gotta test and they test positive and then, then you gotta wait till everybody's negative to readmit. That type of stuff.
So there's a lot of positive tests, but not symptoms or illness?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But we're on the the upside, this is, this is news from two weeks ago, so we're on the, we're on the mend. And starting to make people.
Yeah, John had it two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Hundred and two temperature, you know, foggy bed and the, um. Yeah, we've had a couple of people come down with it, usually from from traveling. You know, you get on a plane, a pretty good chance you're gonna get COVID.
Yeah, even pre-COVID, yeah, you're in that too.
All right, anything else for us?
Commissioner Oscar, do you have any questions? Nope, so you're on mute.
Still on mute.
Nope.
Okay, I guess I was muted.
Yeah, we have you now, yeah.
Okay. Some of the questions I had were all asked by the other two, so I'm I'm in good shape with this.
Okay, thank you.
See this going forward this year? Do you know?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh, we can't use the, we won't have access to the building for probably two more years. I don't think that's, we we may decide to.
Who's in there now? You?
Uh, yeah, so we'll be in there for a year, cause everyone that's in there moves into the addition. Um, so it would be a year before we could even start, and then it's just a question of the money. When we, when we could get the money, we. Yeah.
I think if the numbers look good. Uh, I can't imagine we wouldn't move on it, but but there again, that's not up to me.
Question? Um, on page two of, of the work, make mentions, uh, difficulty in staffing. And that's ubiquitous with all these places, so wh- what are you anticipating? How are you gonna fill the staff? What's your staff gonna look like as far as numbers if you go with the project? And where do people come from?
Um, so I think that's the second sort of phase of the study that Commissioner, um, Hebert was. Mentioning is next to take sort of, take a look at more so a business plan on how we, how we move forward and. There's, you know, there's really the two options of of having county employees staff it. And do that exercise, and then if there is a potential for, you know, a third party that is interested in. Developing a daycare center and and we basically would rent the space to them, that's also another tactic that. Um, employee, employer-based, um.
Yeah.
Childcare centers work.
Will be pretty much like with your, uh, uh, current census of employees.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Let you attract them then.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I think just even just having the convenience of something there on site is is a huge impact, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Lebanon, City of Lebanon is building one, but they're gonna have this YMC.
Uh, Boys and Girls Club of Concord.
The Boys and Girls Club of Concord is gonna run, so there, the city is building the space and. And then Boys and Girls Club out of Concord is gonna run, so that's a model we might, you know, rather than having county employees is another way of.
Uh huh.
Well, even that. Even the Kendall Center out there that is a huge, they have a huge daycare. Um, and but I think that's all. I'm not exactly sure how they run it, but I I think it's funded by, um, the families that use it.
Yeah.
And and other, well, the other groups, maybe businesses, the college may use it, the hospital may use it. But it's a, it's a big, big son.
I think the difficulty here is that, let's say you just do the top floor and you've got twenty kids just for a round number. Twenty kids don't support any kind of repayment of the cost to renovate this building. So you spend a million dollars and then you're getting, you know, something like twenty kids is gonna pay something less than a thousand dollars a month. It doesn't even come, so you you gotta justify that, you know, it's, um. That's, that's the tough part, yeah.
Yeah, that's all, I mean, that's why I'm hoping for some big grant funding that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, CDBG is, um, you know, you could. I mean, the county can only give one. Um. CDBG grant, but they could apply through, like, the city of Claremont, you know, the city could get a CDBG grant. Or I don't know if unity is big enough to to warrant that, but the city.
They usually come to us.
But it can.
But yeah, it would be nice to do one in reverse for once, but.
Well, that would be something, it it's too bad that the school didn't spy, like, the FSAU can apply for CDBG, you know.
No, it's either the city or the county, so we're doing a new food pantry in Concord for the Catholic Church. And the city, because the need is so great, the city applied for a grant and they got a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar CDBG grant. To build a pantry on Diocese's land, um. So it it could, it can happen.
Yeah, don't say that too loud, somebody will come out of the woodwork.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Good seeing you.
Hope the back is better.
Oh, God. It's not knowing what the problem is.
Well, I had, um, a relative, the same thing, fought with a bad back. He wouldn't do an MRI, had to do physical therapy and stuff, they're finally, maybe MRI and stuff, and he's getting a new hip today.
Really?
So it was his, his hip was his backbone.
Well, I did the CAT scan and the MRI.
Yeah.
Surgeon said nothing, and then I walked into a chiropractor and he, he walked, he watched me walk in, he goes, I know what's wrong with you, your hip's out. So he's corrected it twice.
So his, but his big relief was knowing what it is and then, knock on wood, it's getting fixed today. But that, that is the worst.
I will.
All right, so we've got, um, extension handout, any questions, comments on? Extension. There in the report, so I guess you're up, Mary.
Yeah, so, um, just in line with the memo that's in there, um, as I mentioned, there were some comments, uh, that I shared about the feasibility study. And then, uh, in terms of financials, uh, Derek reports that revenue is still in great shape, expenses are catching up. Um, with an eleven percent change in January, which now leaves us only about two percent u- under budget. Um, at the six-month mark, we were about four percent under budget, it's not entirely unexpected. Um, as we had some decent, uh, sized transactions go through. Um, NHGC, nothing significant to report there. Um, as far as, um, Skidoo, the Discover Sugar River Region initiatives are moving along nicely. Um, they had a social at, uh, Romanto's with twenty-three people in attendance. So that sounded great, and the next social is February twenty-fourth at Eastman. And it will feature cross-country skiing and a social at Ford's Tavern. And, uh, Becky's gonna host a kickoff for the Trails Council if she can get enough people to respond and attend. And so, welcome to Sullivan County, uh, Sign Road Show with Select Ford is going great, he's met with Charles Town. Charleston, Washington and Cornish, receiving excellent feedback. And, um, it's also led to the latest version of the sign, which is posted here in the report. And that added the town name where the sign is gonna be installed, so you can see the example says Town of Cornish. And he's on tap to meet with Springfield and Sunapee on the twelfth, Lumsford on the thirteenth, Ashworth on the twentieth, and Grantham on the twenty-eighth. County Grant, Safe Streets for All, uh, yes, some pig work to complete on that before it kicks off. Um, he's working with some questions that he submitted, um, before he can move forward with that. Um, also detailing a conversation with Kate Kirkwood about the lead paint abatement. About the plan to sit tight and wait for the next round, um, that there's about thirty-five thousand left. In CDFA tax funding credit that hasn't been spent, and we have until twenty twenty-six to spend that. Um, court updates, he's been working with, uh, updating the lease with the state. And, um, has done some analysis and feedback regarding their first proposal. Um, and so that has, he's detailed some of that in there that he's working with the state on. Um, and then, um, I think that's it as far as his report, other than a few things that he has. Also mentioned in there for your review offline.
Yes. Interesting. Okay, um, thank you, any?
Yep.
Questions, comments? Yeah, um. All right, um. Commissioners, any old business? Okay, um. A cool field, uh, plow truck.
Yeah, after our last meeting, um, we went ahead and, uh, first we took delivery of the plow truck, so, um. We have that and have used it already, and it's fantastic, thank you very much. Um, and keeping in line with the discussion that we had at the last meeting, um, choosing to not take the trade-in value that was offered. Uh, we went ahead and put together the disposal request form, and you can see, given the, um, estimates that we feel. Um, are more appropriate for the truck and the plow, um, we put together, asking for your permission. To go ahead and list that on the auction site, uh, to be sold.
All right. Well, yeah, I will defer to Joe.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, put that out on the auction site to be sold.
Okay, would those numbers make sense to you?
Yes, they do.
Well, it's an auction anyway.
It's an auction, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It depends what, it depends which way the wind blowing that day, we might get more, we might get less.
Right.
But, uh, yeah, I felt as though that those were more realistic numbers to look at than the trade-in value.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Was that a second?
Second, yeah.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Ben Nelson.
I, Joe, that's good.
Other events, uh. This building is closed on the nineteenth. Um, next meeting is the twentieth, and that's what, Tuesday, right?
Tuesday, yes.
Oh, let's see, written here, Tuesday, so it's twenty, month of Tuesday. Um, it's in. Um, which is like a conference, the twenty-six, we can, let's see, yeah, so we can talk about. What maybe Derek will know more, what's going on there on the twentieth. All right, and, uh, about participation, anybody?
Yeah, well, I'm curious to know how we're doing with, uh. Employee staffing at Sullivan County Healthcare versus Agency.
Um, we weren't.
Or not improved?
It's improved, um, we're doing. What Derek told me the last meeting, we dropped. I can't remember what the percentage was, but we have cut back on agency staffing, um.
We're having real good luck with the, um, um. Uh, AD unit aids with high school students coming in at like fifteen bucks an hour as unit aid. And then a lot of them are taking the classes and we've hired. Six or eight, I think, and, uh, L and As out of that program.
So the training program was really deliberate, it's.
And so mostly from Claremont and Newport, but he's reached out to Windsor High School and they were receptive and. He was meeting with. He was meeting with Fall Mountain and maybe has already.
But how many people do you still have on agency?
My head, I couldn't tell you, um, we can get that number for you, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna.
Well, it's headed in the right direction as far as savings on employees, yeah.
And and pooling pooling together with that, and I can't tell you the name of it, the um. There's like an agency that pulls them together, it's actually cut the costs of the agencies, it it was a wild west for a while, now. Now pricing has stabilized and leveled off a little bit, so it it's not as pricey, it's still way pricier than our own people, but it's not as pricey as it was.
Yeah.
It's almost like a bidding service for agency.
Yeah.
Well, they were, some of them were forced into that, though, by different things that different nursing homes did to make it a little harder for them. To just send anybody in.
So it it's not alleviated, but it's it's in the right direction. Thank you. Um, anything else in the public?
Yeah.
And uh, meeting minutes, we've got January eighth.
Make a motion, make a motion to accept the minutes of January eighth.
And I'll second that motion.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Joe Osgood.
And then the twenty-second. Make a motion to accept. Minutes of the twenty-second.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, Ben Nelson.
Uh, Joe Osgood and Sharon, you can use my stamp.
Thank you very much. And you're good with me using it on surplus form too?
Yes, as well, yes, as well.
Thank you.
And um. And the most moved here, if there's nothing else.
Make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
All in favor? All right.
Hi.
Hi, Joe Osgood.
Hi, George Hebert.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was.